You know I've traveled near and far to see the shining sea. I've seen a lot of places and people that were nice to me. One place that's in my heart and this is how I feel. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. She's nestled in the sand hills on a river called Cake Fair. Special to so many who proudly served our country here. She was named for Lafayette and known for cotton mills. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. Babe Ruth hit his first one. Heard around the world. Sherman marched for the Union and burned the arsenal. Old Market House still standing but stands for freedom's will. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. My all-American city Fayetteville. Talking about my hometown.
Well, good evening. Would like to welcome everyone to our Monday, March 16th, 2020 Fable City Council meeting. This time, we would ask that student pastor Andrew Clark, Aaron Lake Baptist Church, if he would come and join us. We ask that all would please stand for the invocation after the prayer if we could remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Hey, sir.
All right, let us pray. Father, we thank you for this day and this time that you've given us to gather. Lord, just continue to lift up our community, our state, Lord, our nation, Lord, our world to you. It's continuing to go through the coronavirus and, Father, we just pray for our government leaders, the government in which you established. And, Lord, so we pray that you would just give them wisdom and guidance, Lord, through this time. And, Father, help us to just understand and know that even when things are out of control, you are definitely in control and we thank you for that. And it's in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Pastor Clark, good to see you again. Can you tell us a little bit about yourself and your ministry out at Aaron Lake?
Sure. Yeah, so I am a, like I said, student pastor at Aaron Lake Baptist Church. We're over on Bingham Drive and Dr. Jeff Eisenhower is our senior pastor. He's been there for 30 years. I've been there for three, so trying to catch up. But anyway, so we do a lot within our student ministry in particular. Weekly, we minister to over 60 students each week and then we're in schools where we're ministering to between 100 to 150. We're outreach in every week as well. And so we also have a lot of community partnerships and look forward to continuing those partnerships through all that's going on now. And so we're just very involved and excited, so.
Well, thank you for joining us. Thank you for the work that you all do and give Pastor our regards.
We'll do it. Thank you all.
Can we give him a round of applause for... All right, council, as you know, our community, just like the rest of the nation and really the other countries around the world have been dealing with the coronavirus, COVID-19. I've invited some very special guests who are with us tonight. We have Colonel Philip Sonia, Garrison Commander of Fort Bragg, who will come. He will update us on what's going on from Fort Bragg's perspective and how the base is working to keep soldiers and their families safe during this recent pandemic. Also, we are blessed to have the Cumberland County Health Director, Dr. Jennifer Green, who did a wonderful job today in the press conference, kind of informing our citizens about where we are as a community, has been our lead public health official in Cumberland County. And we also have CEO, President of Cape Fear Valley Hospital, Mr. Mike Nagowski, and Dr. Michael Zappa, who give us their perspective as our number one healthcare provider in the region. And so in that order, I guess we'll ask Colonel Philip Sonia if you would come forth and kind of bring us up to date. And thank you for joining us, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Stinging members of the council, we want to thank you guys for inviting us today. What I'd like to be able to do today is talk to you about the preparations that Fort Bragg has made in order to deal with the current virus. We've been preparing for this really since the very beginning of February, just because we already had a plan in action for a series of events. This was one of the events we looked at in November and decided this where we would concentrate some of our efforts and it just so happened that, you know, things had come to pass. So on the Fourth of February began our current operations and I'll let you know where we're at now. So we have rehearsed all of our plans internally into the post with a whole series of different contingencies from individuals redeploying from overseas to other individuals or having larger outbreaks on post and being able to help communicate where those individuals would go to and actually doing a physical walkthrough in each one of those. Right now, we have one brigade of our paratroopers have already begun to redeploy. We have them in a contalment area that's established for quarantine and we put that in our training area so that it's separate from our contalment area and most of our living conditions. We really did that for just ease of use and so easy to rapidly expand and easy for us to control and provide food and resources to. Internal to the post, we also have a series of quarantine posts that we've established. So we've roped off a few areas so as other paratroopers come back, they can go right back into their old barracks and we'll continue to monitor them. Now, that quarantine period does not mean that someone has symptoms. It means that they've come from overseas and we're taking additional precautions. The Secretary of Defense has identified that we should take those precautions and we're following suit with that. And so the military across the board has had a stop movement of their personnel. So any nonessential movements, we've kind of, we stopped and now we're focusing our intentions internally. Those that were coming from overseas, we're quarantining for 14 days and we're doing that at all levels. And then we're continuing to screen those individuals throughout the day to see if there's any additional cases. We also have established an additional facility for isolation. So isolation is when someone begins to actually show the symptoms and we have a facility that we can move those individuals to so they can deal with the virus as well. So all in all, we have a large quarantine area that we've established in-house. We've established our isolation points. We rehearse our programs across the board and we continue to rehearse those on a daily basis. And we have a discussion point probably two times a day to discuss with internal leadership and external on what our best practices are and our best way ahead. And so if you will, let me introduce you to Colonel DePerec, who can talk to you about the medical preparations as well.
Good evening. So where we are right now is that we are doing testing on Fort Bragg. WOMAC not only takes care of those on Fort Bragg and for those that are enrolled there, but also for other military bases in North Carolina as well. At this point in time, you know, the hospital's been doing preparations and in fact, I believe Dr. Green knows our Director of Public Health, Dr. Bedno. So some of the exercises that have been going on, one just about a week and a half, two weeks ago, involve the public health departments of the counties all around Fort Bragg because we fully realize that Fort Bragg does not exist on an island. It is part of the communities around. About 70% of the people that work on that post every day live in these, in the counties that are around. So, you know, this is a concerted effort, not just on Fort Bragg, but with those health departments elsewhere as well. We are going out, we send people out, medical professionals that screen each flight that's coming in from outside the United States. As Colonel Sonia said, the DOD's gone to a stance of any flight that's coming in, the people go into quarantine for 14 days. If anybody seemed to be symptomatic or there was any issues as far as contacts, then they'd be followed more closely. If anybody then shows symptoms, then we're prepared to move them into more of an isolation facility or to follow them closely if they're still at home in order to make sure that they're not out moving about the community and we're not spreading this that we're trying so hard to contain. And as you heard on the news and everybody will say flatten the curve or reduce the impact on our medical system here around us that supports us, you know, Fort Bragg and the rest of the state at the same time, so.
I will say, Mayor, there's an interesting point also with Fort Bragg, as you know, the home of airborne and special operations forces. We still have our current mission set. And so we are balancing our mission set and being prepared for that mission to be able to deploy in 18 hours or 96 hours with a much larger force with making sure we're mitigating the effects here of the virus. And we're continuing to balance those every single day.
Right. Well, thank you, guys. Thank you for sharing with us and, you know, we'd just like to convey to our citizens that we are working with the military in every respect, particularly when it comes down to a crisis situation like this situation. So thank you all and we'll certainly be in touch with you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Dr. Green, Cumberland County Health Director. Welcome.
Good evening. How is everyone doing today?
Doing well.
Doing well. I want to provide some updates about what's going on with COVID-19 in our community and then statewide and then some precautions that we can all take to, as we've heard, flatten that curve. And you'll hear about those in the coming days and many steps have already been put in place. And I'd like to start out by saying this is a rapidly changing situation. So we know if we say something here today, it might change by tomorrow by the time we get home in our cars. So we urge citizens to seek information from credible sources. We want to make sure we're controlling rumors about what is happening or is not happening, cases, positive cases. And so we want to share information as we're able to, but also control rumors. So I want to give three sources where people can go for credible information. And one is the Cumberland County website. They have a COVID-19 webpage that people can go to and we provide updated information there. The second place is the State North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, their website, and then also the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, their website. They can go and get credible information there. We currently do not have any cases of COVID-19 in Cumberland County. If that were to happen, we would immediately issue a press release. In addition, that information will be updated on the Cumberland County Health Department website and our, the county's COVID-19 website. In addition, the State Health Department reports cases on their website as well. So there are several sources and several avenues for which the public would be notified. We know we've heard many rumors about there being positive cases here. We currently do not have any positive cases. And again, we are reporting any presumptive positive cases and any confirmed positive cases. So what that means is if you are presumptive positive, you've been tested at the state laboratory and if you are a confirmed case, you have been treated or you have been confirmed at the CDC. But for all intents and purposes, once you are presumptive positive, we're treating you like a confirmed positive. We are, that positive triggers a public health response on our end and on the state's end and we are considering you a positive case. But there's a little bit differentiation in the language there. Currently, we know there's over 150,000 cases worldwide and there are 3,000, more than 3,000 cases in, outside of China, or more than 73,000 cases outside of China and there are more than 1,600 cases in the United States. And as I looked, right before I walked out of the door, and there are 33 cases in North Carolina. This morning, I said, there's not evidence yet of community spread. We are anticipating that there may be community spread in North Carolina, but we're not sure what that looks like yet. We'll know in the coming days as we get information more about cases. I'll also say that the State Health Department, they have that information on their website as well about testing and the number of cases that are not just in Cumberland County, but might be in other places as well. I want to provide some information about the mitigation efforts that are going on in the county and then also nationwide. And again, this information changes quite rapidly. So we heard from the governor on Saturday that they're closing K through 12 public schools and we know that some daycares and the private schools have followed suit and the prohibition of gatherings of more than 100. Yesterday, we heard from the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention that that recommendation is no more than 50 people in a mass gathering. And then after the press conference, sometime between the press conference and in this meeting, we heard from President Trump that they're recommending no social gatherings over 10 people. So we haven't had any specific guidance from the state on that yet, but we'll get some information in coming days. Again, this is a rapidly evolving situation and we, people can only type so fast. So I'm sure that information will come out and we will certainly share that information with the public as we get it. I want to also provide an update about testing. So we are not testing at the Health Department. We can help approve testing at the Health Department, but currently we are not providing testing. What we need people to do is if they are feeling symptomatic, they need to call their local healthcare provider. And we need you to do that for a couple of reasons. We need you to call so that your healthcare provider can do some screening over the phone and then they can also ask you some important questions about where you've been, what your exposure, and then if you need to be tested, they can arrange that testing for you in collaboration with the Health Department and then wear appropriate PPE. If you walk into a healthcare provider setting or if you walk into the emergency room, there are many, many sick people there that they might be exposed or people that have a weakened immune system. So we want to be very careful about just walking into healthcare facilities. We need folks to call their providers ahead of time. There are particular testing criteria, so we don't need everybody to be tested. We know we have a limited capacity for testing, not just in this state, but across the country and across the world. So we, there are criteria that need to be met for testing and we can only test those that meet those criteria. And those criteria are, one, if you have fever and coughing and shortness of breath and a negative flu test, that meets criteria for testing. If you have those same symptoms, fever, shortness of breath, coughing, and you also have a contact with a known exposure or a known COVID-19 case, you're also eligible for testing. So people need to meet criteria. If somebody is asymptomatic or does not have any symptoms, we're going to ask some additional questions before we're going to do testing. And ideally, we want to be able to rule out flu before we do testing for COVID-19. And then, and I know Mike's going to talk a little bit about what they're doing at the hospital in terms of testing. And then I'll just reiterate some of that piece about social distancing. So we heard from the President, President Trump today, and we've heard from the CDC about distancing ourselves from others, so sitting six feet apart. I think you guys are mostly six feet apart. So we need people to stay six feet apart for the, to the best of their ability. And in particular, that's important for all of our community members, but in particular for our high-risk citizens. So those that are over the age of 65 and those that are, have a weakened immune system and those that have a chronic condition like heart disease or lung disease or diabetes, they are not at higher risk for getting COVID-19, but if they do get it, they have more chances of more severe symptoms than those that are young, healthy adults. I'll also mention that one of the things that we do not need people to do, we do not need people to do, is go buy masks in bulk. When people do that, and I know people are nervous and scared and they're trying to protect themselves, but that actually creates a strain on our healthcare system. So the conversations that we've been having with the hospital and Fort Bragg and our emergency management folks over the past several days have been about PPE, personal protective equipment, and where we're getting that from. So when people are buying, you know, the boxes and boxes of masks, we've seen the price of those increase substantially and we also have seen providers not being able to get it. So we need people that are, if you are a healthy adult, you don't need to wear a mask. If you are immune compromised or you have a, you fall into, you have the flu or you have some other respiratory illness, that would be an appropriate time to wear a mask and protect yourself. And then, of course, we'd also encourage you to stay home. But for those that are healthy adults, we don't need them to wear a mask unless indicated by your medical provider. And then the last thing I'll say is that the county has set up a information line, the COVID, Cumberland Information Line, and that number is 910-678-7657. And that information like can provide general information about COVID-19, closures on the county website, what's going on at the court system. And so we encourage citizens to go to those websites for more information.
So Dr. Green, I did have a couple of questions, but I had one before I go to my council members. You said that you encourage people who are feeling sick to call their healthcare provider.
Yes.
What happens if they don't have a healthcare?
What if you don't have a healthcare provider? So if you, we encourage you to, we have a federally qualified healthcare center here and we've been in communication with them, Stedman Wade. So we'd encourage them to see about becoming a patient at Stedman Wade. If you don't have any other options, call the Health Department and we will help navigate that system for you. So either call the Health Department or get in contact with our federally qualified healthcare center here, Stedman Wade.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember here.
Thanks, Mayor, and thank you. You answered a couple of my questions, but a part of one for me, after you go to your primary care provider and have that discussion with him or her and they find out that, what's the word, that there's a possibility of whatever, however way they may say that, what is their next step? Are they tested there or is it another location where they will be sent from their primary care to be tested?
Great question. And the answer is it depends on who your primary care provider is. So the state, testing can happen in two ways. It can happen at the state laboratory or it can happen through a commercial lab, Lab Core or Quest. So it will depend on what your local provider is choosing to do, whether they're doing it through the state laboratory or doing it through Quest or Lab Core. So you might get sent to a different location, but it will depend on that primary care provider.
And my last question is, just from my, maybe some others' understanding, I hear a lot about the testing kits.
Yes.
And listening to what you're saying now, is that something that we already have in our city?
We do have testing kits in our community. So that's a great point because I think people are getting confused about testing kits and testing. So we, the testing is either, is happening at the state laboratory or, again, Lab Core or Quest, but local providers, some have those testing, test collection kits onsite and then they can perform that. They're not performing the tests there, but they're collecting the specimens so that they can be sent off to Lab Core or Quest or the state lab.
Thank you, thank you very much. Thanks for speaking, our citizens.
And I'll say one piece in addition to your question is, you know, what happens when you get tested? Either wherever you get tested, providers are required to report back to the Health Department about if they've tested somebody. So that is a requirement. This is a reportable disease. If something happens, a suspect case or a confirmed case that's known in the community, they are required to report that to the State Health Department and also required to report that to the local Health Department. So we will get notified.
I want to end with this one because I'm a pet kind of guy. I want to end with this one, because I'm a pet kind of guy. Is this something that can be contagious to your pets? Because I have several around my home.
Yes, so we don't think yet that there's evidence of animal-to-person transmission. So if you have it in your home, we don't think that your pet will become infected. But I will say this, what the CDC is encouraging is if you are sick or you are a positive case, just like we want to isolate our family member, or we want to isolate away from other people, we also want to isolate our pets. So if we have, and that's for anything, if you have the flu, we want you to, you know, maybe not give your hug, your pets hugs and kisses that day.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
All right. Councilmember Ingram?
Thank you, Mayor. You actually answered one of my questions about the healthcare provider. I know a lot of people who don't who don't have healthcare providers, and so they just go to the ER to get their needs met. So my next question will be, what is the turnaround time for testing?
Great, so that depends. That's my answer tonight. So what we're hearing from the state lab is it's between 24 to 72 hours for testing. However, that depends on the volume that they're getting. If the more volume they have, it's going to take a longer turnaround time. But 24 to 72 hours to get a test back once it's submitted and sent.
Okay, my next question is, once they're tested, from my understanding, they go directly into self-quarantine?
Yes.
Whether it's positive, they go directly to self-quarantine?
Yes.
What guidance are they given within self-quarantine? For instance, I had a phone call for someone who said that they were going, but they had a child that they needed to. So what type of guidance is given to those who are going to self-quarantine, specifically with children?
Yes, so there is a form that we have from the state, from the state health department. And anytime we are putting somebody in isolation or quarantine, again, if they're suspected, we're going to immediately put them in isolation or quarantine. We have a form we fill out and we that we go through, how to isolate, how to quarantine, how to monitor yourself, what that means, where you can go, where you can't go, including if they have childcare needs. So we also conduct what's called a needs assessment, and we ask things like, do you have childcare needs? Are you able to get food to your home? Do you have a social network that can support you? In addition, if you don't get, if you go to your local provider, they also fill out a form called a person's under investigation form. They ask similar questions. We want to make sure that they are given guidance about isolation and quarantines, including if they have children, so they can do that appropriately.
Okay. And my last point is, you mentioned it when you were speaking earlier about we not having a confirmed case. But I do want to say, out of 210,000 residents in the city of Fayetteville, we need to be very cautious and not assume that we 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 don't have a case. So we we need to pretty much act as if we do have a case and be very cautious of that. And I know we are not on the list. However, out of 210,000 residents, it is ideally a bit, for me, I would say, a little silly for us to assume that we don't have a case.
Well, by confirmed, I mean, we do not have any cases that have been confirmed at the state lab, and we don't have any confirmed cases at the CDC. So there might be, if there's somebody that hasn't interacted with the healthcare system, understood, but we don't have any cases that have been confirmed by the state lab and no cases that have been been confirmed at the CDC.
I understand that point. I was just making that known to the citizens that are watching to not act as if we we don't have any confirmed, however, out of 210,000 residents, that's 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 a little, so I'm done.
Right, so we want people to encourage, that's a great point.
Yes, don't take for granted.
Right, we want people to practice social distancing, stay home if you can. You know, those are things that we want people, keep washing your hands. We don't have a case yet, but, you know, it's it's in North Carolina, for sure.
Right. Councilmember Waddell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question is, how are we addressing this in the in the community of individuals who are not housed? So how's our homeless community being affected by COVID-19? And how are we preparing to respond to the needs of those individuals?
So the guidance for those that are homeless is limited, frankly. We have shared that guidance with our local shelters here, the guidance that we do have. As a matter of fact, those were a few emails that I sent before I left the office today. So and we've been and we've been in communication over the past couple of weeks. So we have shared that guidance with the Centers for, from the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention with the shelters that we have in our community and those for that are unhoused. And we also want to make sure that if there is a concern about testing, that guidance has some information about how to clean the facility, how to do mealtime, and we've shared that information.
And so in terms of, for example, an organization that may feed or shelter?
Yes.
Because of the of the fact that these people are not, they don't have a home, I guess maybe it'd be important for us to also be aware of those guidelines, because we have a very philanthropic citizenry in the city of Fayetteville. And I want to make sure that our citizens are very well aware of of the implications that COVID could potentially have in terms of how we go about our our service to our fellow mankind even in in this situation. So that would be good information for us to have also, Mr. Mayor.
We can share that guidance about the homeless shelters, I can, and if you would like to share.
Absolutely, we'd love to to share that. We we interact with a number of agencies who are in that space.
And we would, and so again, I talked talked about that needs assessment. So if we had a case of somebody that were that was in a homeless shelter, again, we want to be able to isolate and quarantine them. And so we would, we would do that needs assessment. And then one of the roles of the health department is to coordinate those services if somebody tests positive. So where would we, where do we send them? How do we get them food? So that's also a role of the health department, that we would work with that person.
All right. Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin? Oh, okay.
Well, Dr. Green, we certainly appreciate the insight, and we'll continue to stay in communication so that we can keep our citizens up to date on everything. So thank you so much for taking time.
Thank you for having me, I appreciate it.
Right, Mr. Nagowski and Dr. Zappa?
Good evening to you all. Thank you so much for the opportunity to talk about what we're all doing as a community to fight this. It's a very serious issue, and I couldn't agree more that even though we do not have, as of right now, a confirmed case, it's probably inevitable, right? All across the world, these cases are happening. They're in North Carolina. We are acting as if we have a case. Tell you a little bit about what the health system has been doing. Since China first announced their cases at the end of last year, we began to meet in late January to begin to assimilate the information that was being distributed by the CDC, by the World Health Organization. We now meet on a daily basis. As Dr. Green mentioned, and and before I go any further with that, I want to commend Dr. Green. Her leadership from a community perspective has simply been outstanding. She's been incredible, she's spot on. We've been working to understand what the latest guidance is, it changes almost on a daily basis, and to implement the CDC guidelines across the health system, not not only for patients, but for our own employees. We have about 7,800 employees who, quite honestly, we need to keep healthy and able to work on the front lines. We have internally instituted travel restrictions, proper PPE guidelines. We, on a daily basis, now distribute information to our workforce regarding the latest activity. Every week now, Dr. Zappa and our Director of Infection Prevention and Control, Carolyn Nygren, produce a video. Those videos are available for the public's viewing on our website, capeforvalley.com. We plan on producing those videos on a weekly basis. The very first one is about a 27-minute video. It goes into great detail about COVID-19, what you can do to protect yourself. And then I think the last one is more up to date in in terms of the latest occurrences. It's about a 10-minute video. They're well worth your time. You'll learn a lot, not just about COVID-19, but about infection control in in specifics. None of the hospitals in North Carolina at this point are actually performing the tests. We are all performing specimen collection. As Dr. Green mentioned, we forward that up either to the state lab or to one of the commercially available laboratories. And I'm going to let Dr. Zappa, who serves as our Medical Director for Emergency Services, talk a little bit more about the extensive precautions we've set in place for when people present either at our urgent cares or at the state's busiest emergency department at Village in Owen. Dr. Zappa?
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Mayor, and councilmembers. What we're experiencing is truly unprecedented, the number of people that can be affected. But I want to balance that with understanding that the vast majority of all our citizens will be just fine. We're taking these precautions for two reasons. One, because we want to slow the spread of this disease and enable us to all go back to life as normal. But more importantly, we want to protect the most vulnerable members of our community. We want to protect the senior citizens, those with chronic diseases, and those who have a suppressed immunity. To accomplish that, we have to triage our resources and the way we treat people. First step, as Dr. Green mentioned, is if you're worried, make a phone call. If you don't have a primary care provider, and if you can't get through to the health department, you can reach out to the hospital and call 615-LINK. What we have there is our nurses there will take you through a series of questions. If you have the symptoms and potential exposure or travel history, they grade the symptoms into whether you're mild, moderate, or severe. The mild cases, you are going to be advised to stay home. Those are people that are experiencing symptoms like a common flu or the seasonal colds that we all get. The advice is going to be stay home. In cases that are deemed moderate by your description of symptoms, you have severe body aches, headaches, a nagging cough keeping you up all night, those are going to advise to go to an urgent care. And if it's one of our express cares, we take the information and we deliver it directly to the express care, so we expect you. We instruct you as a patient to call a specific number and wait in your vehicle. And we're going to come out and meet you in the vehicle, give you the appropriate mask to wear, and escort you directly to an area of isolation from the rest of the patients so you not only keep our staff safe, but any other patients potentially waiting. The exact same process is in place if you call and are deemed to have severe symptoms. Severe symptoms, that means fever, bad cough, and you're actually having trouble breathing. You're going to be advised to come to the emergency department, same procedure. You will call from your car, and our team will go out and meet you and take you directly into an isolation room. That's if you call. What about for everyone that just comes to our busy emergency department? Well, you're going to see things a little bit different. Before you actually come through the second set of doors, right in our vestibule, you're going to meet one of our healthcare professionals, and they're going to ask you questions. They're going to ask you, do you have a fever? Have you been coughing? Do you feel short of breath? If you say yes to any of those three, they're then going to ask you, have you traveled? Yes, where? If you've traveled to one of the high-risk countries or one of the states that has community spread, we will immediately hand you a mask and take you to a separate waiting area or immediately to a room, depending on availability. What that does is that keeps our staff safe, so we can continue our mission, and it keeps the rest of the patients who are coming to the emergency department safe. Similar to our colleagues at Fort Bragg, remember, with this crisis, we still have our everyday mission. We are the busiest emergency department in the state. We took care of 144,000 people last year. When the numbers come out from the rest of the country, we will be in the top 10 busiest EDs in the nation. So we have to not only deal with the effects of this COVID-19, but we need to continue to serve our community every day. When we talk about the testing, not everyone is going to get tested. The lot of people who are going to say, go home and rest, may not get tested because they're doing so well. We're trying to preserve our resources at this time. Again, as a state and as a nation, as testing resources become more readily available, we may change that guidance. I'm happy to take any questions.
Councilmember Dawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Nagowski, Dr. Zappa. I have a family member that works at Duke Emergency, and I have a family member at Cape Fear Valley. Are are you going to put masks on these people that that greet the people coming in the door? Because they're going to be less than six feet, they're going to have the social distance. I'm concerned about that because it could impact family members and other great Fayetteville residents that work at our hospital.
So that's a great question. So the way we have set it up is there is actually a six-foot table with a stop sign at one end and our provider at the other. But we do give our provider the option of sitting with the mask all day, or, as many of them are doing, when you say yes at the other end of the six feet, you put the mask on, then you come over and hand the patient the mask. And just one other comment that I brought up is, we are restricting visitors. Now, some people might look at that as a hardship, but that, once again, is protecting our most vulnerable patients. For example, at Highsmith Rainey, where I have the privilege of serving as president, we have stopped all visitors into the long-term acute care facility. All of my patients there are potentially at risk, and we need to protect them. In the emergency department on Owen Drive, it is one family member only. You cannot come in with your whole family into the emergency department. The exception is pediatrics. We do let two people with our pediatric patients. In the hospital overall, we're limiting to one visitor with the patients upstairs. And I will stand here and say that these rules are subject to change, and by I mean change, they will likely get more strict before we're able to relax them.
Thank you. Did have a couple more questions. Councilmember Kinston?
Thank you so much for being here tonight. I just had one quick question as far as daycares. How do you monitor infants or toddlers at this point?
So right now, we would go the same mechanism of potential symptoms. So they would contact their pediatrician, go through the same kind of risk assessment and symptom assessment. And if they're appropriate to be isolated, then they would not be allowed to go to daycare. If they had symptoms sufficient to require evaluation, either by the express care or severe symptoms, to the emergency department, same basic process would be followed.
Just on the the whole daycare issue, we commend the governor and the school board for suspending school and not having the children attend. Clearly, if you're an employer, it's a concern, and and we employ 2,000 nurses across the health system, and and many of our nurses have families. So in order to make sure that we have sufficient personnel, especially frontline personnel, we've expanded tremendously and will put in place, starting tomorrow, a greatly expanded daycare system for the health system so that our nurses, our doctors, our pharmacists can stay on the job and make sure that their children are being taken care of.
That's good, that's good. Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to just say thank you to all of you guys that came out to provide the city with all the resources that's definitely needed. So I just wanted just to commend you guys because this is something that's new, that hit our city as well as our nation. And as you all know, you guys work on a everyday basis, and I can only imagine what you guys see outside of the coronavirus. So I just wanted to thank you, as well as Dr. Green. She's only been, you just got with the city, what, less than five months ago? Well, I'm sorry, with the county. So, yes, so thank you for your hard work, as well as the military.
Well, Dr. Green, we know how to break you in right, huh? Pandemic soon as you get here. But thank you, Mr. Nagowski, you always Johnny-on-the-spot for for being a good partner in the community. I did have a question. You guys said, under normal circumstances, you see about 150,000 patients in the emergency room?
Correct.
And so potentially, and this is why this is important, as we look out and plead with our citizens, we have one of the busiest frontlines in the country, and so we really need to make sure that we contain and curve. And so we're asking our citizens to please, today, the commissioner of the county, Commissioner Chairman Fairclough and myself signed some emergency orders for Cumberland County and the city of Fayetteville, was joined by Dr. Green, Mr. Nagowski, and and others to talk about the urgency to plead with you, to please practice those things that these healthcare professionals are advising us to do. Let's not meet in large groups. The guidance has been given from a state level, from our governor, for 100. CDC has asked for 50, but if you can avoid large groups, please do so for the foreseeable future. Also, as a city, we talked about earlier tonight, that we're changing some of our processes to make sure that we processes to make sure that we're keeping our citizens safe, that we're going to encourage and ask that you not attend our council meetings in person. The state gives us guidance that we have to keep going about the people's business, that we have to keep the city moving, but we want to keep you out of harm's way, and we want to keep ourselves out of harm's way. And so we'll cut down on our interactions just because we're not set up for a six-foot radius of social distancing. So we want to comply, we want to set a good example. But I think that it is incumbent upon everyone that's watching this, the reason why I invited them tonight, is that you would see the urgency of how we can contain it. So far, we've been blessed in Cumberland County.
Yes, sir.
Okay, but, but, it tells us that we still have to do our job and be vigilant and to follow the direction of these, these fine professionals. So thank you all. We'll continue to be in touch. Citizens who are watching this by social media or by media, we will continue to put everything that you've heard tonight on our website, so that you'll have a point of information. We'll put links that go to their website that have more detail, and we have a number that has been set up. City and county, again, working jointly to address this crisis, and this is a number that you can call for information. It will triage and send the call either to Cape Fear Valley, and I'll get you, Mr. Nagowski, to share your number. I think it's 910?
910-615-Link. L-I-N-K.
So if you have a medical-related question, please call the 910-615-Link. If you have just a general question about services or resources, please call 910-678-7657, which will get you and point you in the right direction. Or also come on to the city of Fayetteville's website, cityoffayetteville.gov, or FayettevilleNC.gov, and like our social media page, and we will continue to push information. But thank you guys for joining us tonight. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Thank you.
Let's give all of our healthcare professionals a round of applause. And of course, we have Mr. Bullitt here, Emergency Management Services. So every time we have a crisis in this community, he is working 24 hours a day. So sir, I guess you're back to work.
Well, I didn't know I was that good. Good evening, Council, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and the whole audience listening. That was a tough act to follow. I'm thankful for our partners stepping up with their commentary. What I want to bring you tonight is just some remarks about, really, a planning process that's been in place, day in, day out, among my shop and among other city departments, that we've kind of placed into context, if you will. For instance, back in the fall, we update our continuity of operations plans, which also have a continuity of government thread, which is germane to what we've talked about here this evening. And these plans live in a state where they're called upon when something as simple as a water main break might force you to leave a city building, all the way up to the scale of where we are tonight. It's just a matter of adding the context, and what the context surrounds are those mission essential functions that our various city departments carry out. Fire and police, that's easy. You can easily tell what we do. Transit, as far as transporting folks. Solid waste, picking up trash, these are all sorts of things that we have to have kind of a backup plan on. If the normal patterns and structures don't work, what will we transition to? So the last three or four days, we've been testing a number of scenarios, thought processes. For instance, looking at how we can use cross-training folks to carry out missions. Can a solid waste garbage truck operator be replaced with someone from the heavy equipment ranks and streets, as an example? There can be cross-training there, where if somebody's sick and out, that function doesn't stop. Because some folks just can't tell a work. Can't tell our bus driver to go home and log back in and do their job from home, and we realize that. Also, what this context does is look at a bigger picture. We know commerce in the community is affected. The city's a big player in that, but look at private enterprise as well. Look at supply chains right now. Masks came up tonight. Personal protective gear all over, from shoe covers to head covers, gowns, and so forth, is about like the toilet paper and other things disappearing in our grocery stores. And I appreciate the comments tonight. If you're healthy, you don't need a mask. So we've taken measures even among fire and police where we don't have to actually answer some of the calls that our medical specialist tonight talked about, because they're triaged. That way, we limit the amount of people that might be exposed. Not to say we're not going to answer a call. If it's a true emergency, someone's not breathing, of course, you'll get the same excellent service that you depend on day in, day out. There's just a grand portfolio of things that we've been working on that have led up to the state of emergency that you saw filed and signed by the mayor this morning at 11:00. But what led up to that are some things that we're doing in terms of something as simple as a foot pedal on a door, so that you don't have to touch an exit door on a bathroom. That's a modification we made to City Hall. We have enhanced cleaning with electrostatic foggers that were new to some of us, that actually clean surfaces better than you could just take a wipe. And we've used that in our rec centers and transit, and the fire departments used them, the police departments used them, especially in high-traffic areas, where we need to assure things are as clean as we can possibly make them. We're also working on a portal in the ground floor of City Hall, what some of you might know as the Cape Fear Room, right across from Council Chamber here, which will kind of become, if you would compare it to the kiosk that they're trying to use in the fast food industry now, where you don't have to talk to the clerk to take your money, although we can't replace the people. We still have to have people, but it limits the number of patrons in contact at any one time, but it still offers you the array of services. And you don't have to roam all over City Hall for those services. So that's another glaring example of how we're trying to make business safer, keep the doors open, but at the same time, use best practices and do what's expected to protect the health, not only of the public at large, but also our own city workers. Some of the other things that we're working on, we're always tightly oriented with Fort Bragg and with the county in terms of public information. You've covered the websites tonight. I'm not going to get into all of that, but as the day goes forward, our pages mirror and link to each other. So there's probably more information available now than one could ever digest, and that's a good thing, because people want to stay informed, and we need them to stay informed. We want to do what we can also with this public information to fight our number-one enemy now, which is not the virus, it's the hysteria surrounding the virus. Because largely, the healthy people are going to do okay in this, and we've identified, thanks to what the Health Director said and others, the high-risk group. We know who they are. It's a matter of just taking care of them. I could go on and on about some of the things that we've got in place. We meet daily as the day is drawn near to where we might have to change some other posture, but there are so many different things that some of the different departments are putting in place. I would really be sub to your questions, if you have a question about a particular department, than to keep us here late tonight.
All right. Well, we appreciate that. Council, do we have any questions related to our internal organization and what Mr. Bullitt gave us? You let him off that easy?
Uh, I think everyone is confident that you all know what to do, and we have full confidence in you and the staff, the city manager and the team. We're in good hands internally. Just wanted to say that, for those that may not have tuned in to the press conferences today, that the city has banned all nonessential travel of employees, that we're taking the precaution, in addition to those things that you mentioned, to keep our employees safe and to keep the public safe in general, because they live here and interact with the citizens. So if there's nothing else for you to add, sir, we'll let you get back to it. Oh, I did have a question that popped up.
No, I'm sorry. Well, I have a question for you, but I just wanted to inform, can I inform the citizens that we are having a curbside meal pickup, so they can probably contact the school and see what time? Because I think it's from, what, 11:01? 11:01?
All right.
Those that are watching, I don't know if we're still live. So those that are watching, Cumberland County Schools, and I would just say, go to Cumberland County Schools' websites. They have listed locations of schools varying from high schools, middle schools, and elementary schools, that will have curbside pickup to where any child under the age of 18, they do not have to be a Cumberland County School System student, they can be aged too, or go to get daycare. So go to their website, and that's a link we could probably put on our site as well, to get the students the meals that they need. You do not have to have your child, if I remember correctly, you do not have to have your child present with you when you pick up the meal. But that is, that came out today. I forgot what the hours are, but go to the website and you'll see it there, Cumberland County Schools' website.
So of course, just to finalize that, as school is out, it's a governor's executive order for schools for the next two weeks, so there are food insecurities in kids who only eat when they're in school. So we want to make sure that we've got that covered. So please reference the Cumberland County School website, or you can call that number that I gave, 910-678-7657. We'll make sure that you're pointed in the right direction. But thank you, councilmembers, and Mr. Bullitt. Thank you, sir. All right. All right, Council, certainly some useful information. So we have some recognitions tonight. I will read those. We'll do it a little different, because we've encouraged some people who may have been a recipient of these particular proclamations, may or may not be here to receive them tonight, and we'll make sure that we forward those. So of course, in honor of Women's History Month, so only appropriate that I let one of the young ladies that are on a dance with us read this particular proclamation. I'll go to Mayor Pro Tem, if you could read this.
I would be honored to. And I'm saying this with my fellow councilwoman, women on the diocese. Whereas American women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our city in countless recorded and unrecorded ways, and whereas American women have played and continue to play critical economical, economic, cultural, and social roles in every sphere of life by constituting a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside of the home. And whereas American women have played a unique role throughout the history by providing a majority of the volunteer labor force. And whereas American women, who particularly important to the establishment of early charitable, philanthropical, and cultural institutions of the United States, and whereas American women of every race, class, and ethnic background served as early leaders in the forefront to every major progressive social change movement. And whereas American women have served our country courageously in the military, and whereas American women have been leaders, not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolishment movement and the emancipation movement and the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement and other movements, especially the peace movement, which create a more fair and just society for all. And whereas, despite these contributions, the role of the American woman, women in history has been consistently overlooked and undervalued. I'm going to say that again. The role of American women in history has been consistently overlooked and undervalued in the literature, teaching and studying of American history. Now, therefore, I, Mitch Colvin, Mayor of the city of Fayetteville, North Carolina, and on behalf of the city council and more than 208,000 citizens, do hereby proclaim the month of March in the year 2020 in honor of Women's History Month, and call upon the residents of Fayetteville to observe March as Women's History Month with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. In witness thereof, I hereon do set my hand and cause of the great seal of the city of Fayetteville to be affixed this 16th day of March 2020. Mitch Colvin, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, we'll ask Mr. Randy Hume, if he can come to the podium. I'll stay six feet away from you. I'll let Mayor Pro Tem read this proclamation to you and your team.
Whereas, on Wednesday, March 18th, 2020, public transit system across the country will observe Transit Driver Appreciation Day to recognize the transit drivers and their hard work and dedication. Whereas, the day rises awareness for frontline transit employees who safely move our community forward by connecting people to jobs, educational institution, medical facilities, leisure activities, and to Fort Bragg. And whereas, the city of Fayetteville wants to acknowledge the commitment and dedication shown by the transit drivers, who are required to multitask in order to maintain a schedule, check fares, give directions, announce stops, remember stop requests, and courteously greet the transit customer we serve, all while safely maneuvering an extra-large vehicle through the unpredictable traffic, adverse weather conditions, and some really tight spaces. And whereas, it is also recognized that many other transit employees support the transit drivers with vehicle maintenance, customer information, dispatching, and other assistance behind the scenes to ensure our fixed route to the fast track. Paratransit services are there every day for almost 5,500 riders. Now, therefore, I, Mitch Colvin, Mayor of the city of Fayetteville, North Carolina, on behalf of the city council and more than 208,000 citizens, do hereby honorably proclaim the 18th of March in the year 2020 in honor of Transit Driver Appreciation Day. In witness thereof, I hereon do set my hand and the cause of the great seal of the city of Fayetteville to be affixed this 28th day of February 2020. Mitch Colvin, Mayor.
All right. We've got to practice what we preach, y'all. All right. So at this time, we'll have Dr. Wade and Ms. Joanna Bass, North Carolina Council Coalition Community Engagement Coordinator, Ms. Nikia Smith. Meet you at the podium. I'll stay six feet away from you two.
Whereas, the Constitution of the United States requires the U.S. Census Bureau to conduct and count of the population and provide an opportunity for local governments to help shape the foundation of our society. And whereas, the city of Fayetteville, North Carolina, is committed to ensure every resident is counted, and April 1st, 2020, is the official deadline for residents to submit their Census 2020 forms. And whereas, every 10 years, the U.S. Census Bureau counts residents across the country, and accurate data is critical for government programs, policies, decision-making, and including federal representation. And whereas, the federal and state funding is allotted to communities, and decisions are made on matters of national and local importance based, in part on the census data. And whereas, the census brings 675 billion in federal funds to communities across the country for programs that support highways, healthcare, affordable housing, economic and community development, high-energy assistance, nutrition for women, infants, and children, education, and more. Whereas specifically, North Carolina annually receives 16 billion for the largest federal assistance programs because of the census-derived data. And whereas, the census creates hundreds of thousands of jobs across our nation, thereby improving local economies. And whereas, 2020 census will feature new technology that will allow respondents to answer census questions online in addition to by phone or on paper. And whereas, a united voice from businesses, governments, educators, nonprofits, faith leaders, media, and others will work to develop and mark the 2020 census across the entire community to raise overall awareness to the increased participation among all populations. Now, therefore, I, Mitch Colvin, Mayor of the city of Fayetteville, North Carolina, on the behalf of the city council and more than 208,000 citizens, do hereby honorably proclaim April 1st in the year 2020 in honor of Census Day. And in witness thereof, I hereon do, unto, set my hand in the cause of the great city seal of Fayetteville to affix the first day of April 2020. Mitch Colvin, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Council, for this awesome presentation.
Thank you very much, Council for this awesome proclamation. I do want to clear up that we had a roster change, and Ms. Bass couldn't make it with us. But this evening, we have Sharon Covington, who is the partnership specialist for the U.S. Census Bureau. And so I want to thank her for joining us. And if you will allow me like a couple of more seconds, I wanted to recognize the city members who are part of the Cumberland County Complete Count Committee, who make up our steering committee. One of those is Corporate Communications Director Kevin Arata, and the other one is city senior planning, senior planner David Nash. And we have a coalition of individuals that allow us to be effective and to put our best foot forward in terms of the count. Part of that is in higher ed, and we're pleased tonight to have our Census Fellow from Fayetteville State University, Mrs. Julius Britman. Mr. Britman, if you'll just stand. Thank you. Okay. And he is also joined at the other universities. From FTCC, we have Jesse Watts. And from Methodist University, we have Frederica Fredlicia Lonsana. So these young people are helping us get out to count on our college campuses, and especially with our commuter students, and those are hard-to-count populations. So we're very blessed to have them. And again, thank you for this great proclamation.
You're welcome. Did have a question, Dr. Wade.
Yes, sir.
Did we have the date right as to when this officially ends? Did you want to give us a date correction on that?
The last date for data collection, July 31st.
July 31st. Okay. All right. Councilmember Ingram and Mayor Pro two.
I'm very glad that we decided to do this on tonight, because everything that's going on right now, and rightfully so, could be a huge distraction. So however, though we do have to be concerned about our health, let's be proactive and do one thing as well as the other. And let's not, and talking directly to our citizens that are watching at home, let's not forget about our census. And our forms are going out. I hear Mr. Hair, Councilmember Hair just said he got his. So let's continue the good work and make sure we do our census forms. Things may have changed. I know the county has a great partnership with allowing the library to utilize computers. So that may have changed as of right now. However, it can be done by phone and internet. So we, those that are able to do so, let's go ahead and be proactive where we can. And those that plan to still do it in person, we'll get to you. We'll make sure we get it done. But those that can do it by phone and do it by computer, please do as so. Thank you.
All right. Mayor Pro two?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to talk about, when we were at the city-county liaison meeting, there was some numbers that were thrown out to us. And I just want the listening public to understand how important the census is. And I don't know if you want me to say it, or would you like to kind of give a roundup of how much it cost us 10 years ago when we did not get everybody counted?
So I'll say it in this way, Madam Mayor Pro Tim. Right now, we are looking at, number one, 10 years ago, we missed the count of our kids in our state. We missed counting our kids by 25,000. If we had had that, if we had been able to count that number correctly, that would have gotten North Carolina another congressional seat. In terms of where we are today, right now, Ms. Smith's organization, the North Carolina Counts Coalition, has an interactive map, which by county projects the level of undercount that we're going to have in every county in the state. So in Cumberland County and Fayetteville, I looked at the map, and I took a snapshot of 16 census tracts. Clearly, Fayetteville is larger than 16 census tracts, much less than county. But I looked at those census tracts, and the total number that is projected to be undercounted in those census tracts is 13,980 individuals. Now, according to Bob Coats, who is with the State Office of Budget and Management, each one of those individuals that might be missed represents $1,828 per year. The Census funds 55 different federal programs that brings those federal dollars into our community to help our residents. That undercount is simple math. $1,828 per person times 13,980. We are looking at somewhere in the neighborhood of $25 million plus, and that is in this, that is for one year. And since we only do this every 10 years, again, simple math, 10 times that number. So I thought, like, 25 million is real money to me. You multiply it times 10, it gets to be, yes, sir. Yes, sir. So that's why it is so important. I'm so glad that Councilmember Ingram brought up the fact that this year, you can participate in the census online. We're pushing it out online. We're pushing it out virtually. So it was made for a time like this where we have this outbreak. People can still be counted. They can call. They can, they can do it online. There's no reason why individuals cannot be counted. And we, and I plead with our residents to be counted.
So thank you so much for that information. So we can easily say that every time, if you feel that it's not important to be counted, that we have given you the numbers that we are losing $25 million a year.
Potentially.
Potentially $25 million a year that helps us get services for our city and our county.
And once again, ma'am, I only looked at 16 census tracts. There are other numbers across. So, but to your point-
We're leaving a lot of money on the table.
Absolutely, ma'am. Absolutely.
And it's our own fault if we don't fill out the census form. Thank you.
Absolutely. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I do have a couple more questions. Councilmember Hair and then Dawkins?
Just one quick thing. So I received mine, my packet, I think, on Saturday. But if I want to do it online, which I guess is, it should be quicker, right?
Yes, sir.
Then I can go ahead and do it online regardless. I did receive the paper, the packet through the mail.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Then Miss Covington, if you want to come up and speak to that at all?
That is correct.
Okay.
Okay, cool. All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Dawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I got my packet, and I did it online. It took me less than 10 minutes. And I can't remember the website name. It's like Census 2020, or can you Google it, I guess? I just, I want to make sure our citizens.
Hello. Good evening. The website, Councilwoman Dawkins, is 2020census.gov. You can go directly there, and it has "Take the Survey," and just click on that.
And then there's an 800 number, or an 888 number, or?
Yeah, the 88 number, 1-800 number is listed on the website. The one thing I do want to make sure that everybody's aware of is that at the very top of the website, you'll see a small globe. If you, if English is not your first language, you can click on that globe, and it'll drop down 13 languages. It'll also give you the 1-800 number in those different languages. And you can call the 1-800 number, and we have up to 59 languages that the census can be interpreted into for you.
And Dr. Wade?
Yes, sir.
One question. With all this technology, I know our school system has like 50,000 students, and those are the ones we're probably going to miss, unfortunately. But there's really no way that we can compare databases, or, because a lot of those students may have their parents, or their parent PCSed, or they got out of the military and moved away. There's just no way to be able to capture some of those names?
Well, sir, we're certainly going to give it our best shot. We're collaborating with Fort Bragg right now.
Right.
We have an ongoing working relationship with the garrison out there. And we were supposed to be at the Community Information Exchange, but it got canceled. Oh, actually, it's going to be virtual, so I don't know if, how much time we'll have. But the garrison was willing to give us a lot of time because this is very important. It's also, it's also important that we have the activities that are here locally. We're very blessed to have Ms. Smith, who as the Community Engagement Coordinator for the North Carolina Counts Coalition, actually is boots on the ground. And she'll probably have to modify that approach a little bit, given our current health state. But her position was funded from a grant from the Cumberland Community Foundation to the, to the North Carolina Counts Coalition. So once again, this is our money coming back home, and she's been doing an awesome job. So I want to certainly recognize her.
Thank you, Dr. Wade. Thank you, ladies.
Yes, please.
To answer your question about the website as well, Cumberland County, as well as Fayetteville City, both have links on their website that will take you directly to the census link. So if you don't remember that exact web address, you can go right to the city page, the county page, or NTCount Coalition's page. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yep. Councilmember Kinston?
Thank you, Mayor. You did answer my question. For someone who misplaced their envelope, that they can go in and electronically complete theirs as well.
Absolutely, ma'am. In fact, one of our census, if they don't want anybody to visit them at their house, to fill it out online. Of course, once again, that may not be a problem right now. So, but we encourage people to do it anyway.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Thank y'all.
Thank you, sir.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
All right, council, we have a little business to get down to. Item 5.0, the approval of the agenda. Can I have a motion? Are those motion, okay, it's a motion by Councilmember Kinston. It's a second by Councilmember Ingram to approve. All those, any discussion on the motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes. And Councilmember Waddell joins us by phone. You there?
Green.
Green. All right. And that is unanimous by those present. I would also like to acknowledge Councilmember Wright, who has had a loss in his family. So we ask that you please keep him and his family in prayer, loss of his sister. So the motion carries. Item 6.0 is the consent agenda. I'll look to you for action, council. Is a motion by Councilmember Ingram? There's a second by Councilmember Kinston. Any discussion on the motion? All right, council?
I want to pull one, sir.
Okay. All right. So what we'll do is, which item would you like to pull, sir?
6.04, sir.
Okay. So presume the motion on the floor, and I'll verify this with Councilmember Ingram and Kinston, is to approve with the exception of item 6.04?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right. So council, there's a motion and a second. Motion by Councilmember Ingram is a second by Councilmember Kinston. I have it right of it. Bless us.
Green.
All right. All right. Any discussion on the motion? I see a Councilmember Waddell's already agreed. All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes. And, Madam Clerk, that is unanimous by those present, including Councilmember Waddell. Item 6.04, Mr. Hair.
Yes, sir. Mayor, I would like for one of our staff members to come forward and please just kind of give a, yes, Mrs. Blot to come. And as we're speaking upstairs, if you would, please, give the citizens and make them aware of how the businesses and can take advantage of the grant proposal for our corridor, for our Merkison Road corridor.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. So the ordinance tonight is to allow the department to expand beyond the one-year allocation into a multiple-year program. All the resources were not spent this fiscal year, so we'd like to expand it in the upcoming years. We have met with a number of officers for the home buyer program, and we are working with our bankers and brokers and real estate agents to expand the program to their clientele as well. We've had some great numbers there. Still a little slow. Home buying is a process. What we've had some great progress, though, is on our commercial side. We've actually gone door-to-door with those businesses on the Merkison Road corridor and in the Person Street, B Street area. I want to talk about what this program is for the business owners. You allocated $100,000 for that program, and we should be finalizing three loans and grants to total about $74,000. Again, we've outreach to about 30 businesses. About 15 have actually shown interest, and we're just waiting on additional documentation to close those. So anybody who is on Merkison Road or B Street, a business owner who would like to participate, can contact the department at 910-433-1590. And we do have additional funds available, not just in this program, but our other programs as well.
Ms. Blot, also, if you would, explain what it is that if citizens are applying for this little, this loan through the grants, what is it that they're able to do? I mean, what, Tim, what's the whole purpose of the grant?
So the $100,000 commercial corridor revitalization is just for that, revitalization in those corridors. So the businesses are able to apply or be granted funding for exterior facade improvements, landscaping, roofs, signs. There's a multitude of items that they can qualify for depending on their need. It is a matching grant, so they will have to come to the table with some funds. But we've also got other programs. We can help them leverage this opportunity, and that's where we seem to be finding the most success.
And our business owners are already starting to take advantage of-
Yes, they are.
-enhancement.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Ingram?
Hi. I know you've mentioned the Merkison Road corridor, B Street corridor. I want also, that does apply to those that are in that Grove Street area as well?
Yes. The B Street corridor encompasses a portion of Grove Street.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted that clarity to be stated. Thank you.
Those maps are available online, or they can contact our department, and we'll be happy to forward those.
Thank you.
All right. So in other words, Ms. Blot, before we let you go, you have money that you're trying to get on the street in Merkison Road, B Street, and Grove Street.
Yes.
Businesses. There's money available at the city. And what's your number?
The department number is 910-433-1590.
All right. 433-15-
90.
90. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
You good, sir? All right. I'll look to you for action on this item.
I'll make a motion that we approve item 6.04, the adoption of the special revenue fund project ordinance for 2020.
Second.
All right. Everybody was on this one, but I have Councilmember Davis-
6.04 item.
Quick on the switch. So we have a motion by Councilmember Hair. There's a second by Councilmember Davis. Any further discussion on the motion, council? I'll look to you for action.
We want more money.
Green.
Madam Clerk, that is unanimous by those who are present.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Item 7.0 has been postponed due to the special instruction of the coronavirus. So the public forum that normally takes place tonight, we'll have our citizens, give our citizens an opportunity, as well as instructions as to how to participate in that, while we are encouraging them to join us online or by Fay TV. So we will put that out, and we will postpone the public forum to our next meeting. Also, we have item 8.0 is the public hearing. And individuals who wish to speak at the night's public hearing must have signed up. Speak with the city clerk by name and address before 7:00 PM. 15 minutes will be allowed for each side of the issue at the public hearing. Individual speakers will be limited to three minutes each unless by previous arrangement, there's a single spokesperson that is designated to speak on behalf, on their behalf. When the city clerk calls your name, please come to the podium, clearly state your name and address for the record. You may then address the city council. When the light changes from green to amber, you have 30 seconds remaining. At the end of your allotted time, the timer will ring. Council did discuss a way in which to hold one of these items, and we will leave the public hearing open until further instructions are given to the citizens who would like to participate in the subsequent items. So with that, I'll ask Ms. Keisha if you would come forth. How are you?
I'm fine. How are you? Good evening, mayor and members of city council. I'm here tonight on the Progress Street closing public hearing. The Bethel Christian Assembly has petitioned the City of Fayetteville to close a portion of Progress Street. As you can see on the map, that portion is in between Garvin and Trade Streets. They are doing a redevelopment of their parcels. They own everything on both sides of that portion of the road. The North Carolina General Statute requires us to follow a certain process. As part of that process, the public hearing has been scheduled for tonight. Now, in preparation for that, the Real Estate Division has contacted the public utility companies and has asked if there are any utilities that need to be reserved in that area. that need to be reserved in that area. There were, and we are reserving utilities for the city, PWC, Charter, Spectrum, and Century Link. I have been in contact with the church to make sure that that isn't interfering with their property redevelopment that they have proposed. So, they are aware of that and it is not. We have contacted fire, EMS, and the police department to see if it is going to affect their response times. Um, I got no response from that. There was also a traffic study done by our engineering department that indicated there are no actual, um, significant impacts by closing this portion of the road. The city also, the real estate division, also had to publish this public hearing notice for four weeks prior to this public hearing. We had to notify by certified mailing the adjacent property owners of this. And we also posted the property for thirty days so that everybody would be aware of this hearing that's going on tonight. Now, so we have followed the proper procedure and everything has been done. Does anybody have any questions about the proposed closing?
Uh, uh, see, Councilmember Ingram?
Um, I just want to say thank you. And, uh, just for council's information, those that are watching, I have spoken with the community members that live directly, um, direct, directly in it. Um, in that community, in the area, they, they are in support of this, um, happening. Um, as they've been, uh, great partners with the church, um, and with it being in their community and, um, are, are hoping that this youth center that is to come is, brings some great, great, um, energy to the community. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right. With that, uh, with that, we open the public hearing. Madam clerk, please call your first speaker.
May we have two speakers for this item? The first speaker is Mr. Dale Crawford.
Evening, sir.
Evening.
Evening.
First of all, I hadn't had the opportunity to welcome the new members, uh, and all. I'm sure you're hitting the ground running and, uh, learning and, and all that. And we appreciate everybody, uh, you know, what you all do for the city. And I appreciate the opportunity to speak. Uh, I am speaking on behalf of Bethel Christian Assembly. And if you've been out there within the last four or five years, you've seen what good things they've done. Uh, they've removed a lot of blighted, uh, uh, homes and residences and commercial buildings and all, and, uh, and all. So, uh, they do own, uh, as, uh, the city had, city staff had mentioned, on both sides of the street. Uh, I think they even, you know, possibly down the road have plans maybe to remove some of the asphalt, which helps us runoff and things of that nature. So, I think everything, uh, is positive, uh, to allow this road closing to go through. I'm here to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Uh, did have a question. Um, well, um, we'll get our speakers and then hold, hold a question for that. Councilmember Dawkins?
Mayor, our next speaker is Mr., uh, I'm sorry, is Pastor Sweeney?
I don't think Pa, the pastor made it.
Oh, okay.
So, I'm just the-
Thank you, sir.
Again, answer any questions.
Okay. I have no further speakers.
All right. So, with that, we'll close the public hearing. Councilmember Dawkins?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I just had a, a question for Mr. Crawford. Um, that area has flooded in, in years past. And I'm thrilled to hear they're all considering breaking up some asphalt, which could help dissipate some of the, some of the floods. So, um, my question, it looks like the church owns everything, or the academy owns everything, the assembly owns everything around the street. Um, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
And, um, I'm assuming, have they hired you or you're, you're here representing the assembly?
That is correct.
Okay. And, um, you with expertise in stormwater management, um, any, uh, changes that might impact our city stormwater system, pushing more water on, onto the corollary streets if we close this street? That's my primary concern.
I would think that would be, all be good to close the street and possibly, you know, remove some asphalt, things of that nature. They do have, uh, um, plans to do it in addition, which will follow all the stormwater ordinances and things that, uh, like that comply. So...
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Now, um, by the way, uh, nonprofits, for the advocacy of the council, nonprofits have to pay a stormwater fee, whereas nonprofits do not have to pay property taxes. So, just, is that also true, Mr. Crawford?
I would think that's correct. Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sure. All right. Any other questions, uh, for Mr. Crawford? All right. Counselor, uh, Ingram, I think I saw your light. Motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the, um, the pu, the consideration to closing a portion of Progress Street.
All right. There's a motion by Councilmember Ingram. And I've got a hard second by Councilmember Dawkins. Any, uh, discussion on the motion?
Hard second.
Yeah, hard second. All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes. Uh, to approve.
Thank you, council.
All right. Uh, Councilmember Waddell? Did we lose her?
I'm here.
Okay. Uh, motion on the floor to approve, uh, motion-
Green. Green.
All right. Motion carries. Madam clerk, that is unanimous by those voting. All right. Thank you, Ms. Keisha. Good luck to you. Pastor Sweeney, tell him to keep up the good work. Um, item eight-point-zero-two and three, council, I think we talked, uh, these were for, uh, public hearing for Phase Five, uh, annexation Area Twenty-four. Um, I think by your guidance upstairs, um, we had asked that we leave the public hearing open to the next meeting, uh, just to make sure that, um, citizens had instructions and opportunity to, uh, sign up to speak. I know the night could have been a little challenging. The only reason we heard the previous case was because, uh, the speakers, both, uh, Pastor Sweeney and Mr. Crawford, the only two speakers who had signed up were actually present. So, I think council based the decision on that. But this item, uh, council, did you, uh, before we opened the public hearing, uh, want to, uh, continue this as discussed in the dinner meeting? Uh, madam clerk, are there any?
No, we have no speakers for this item or the next one.
Okay. All right. So, I'll need a motion to, uh, to table these items to the next council meeting. Um, so, is that... All right, let me reset. All right. I think I, I think I know, but we had a lot going on. So, Councilmember Davis? Did you, or Banks-McLaughlin? Both of you pressed at the same time.
Sorry. Um, I make a mo, a motion to move, um, the public hearing.
So, we'll move to continue the public hearing on items eight-point-zero-two and three?
Yes.
Uh, and that will, uh, remain open until the next council meeting?
Yes.
All right. And there's a, there's a motion by Councilmember Banks to do that as a second by Councilmember Davis? Is that your light, sir? All right. Any dis, any discussion on the motion?
No, sir.
Is that a discussion?
I have a discussion.
Okay. All right.
I might have misunderstood. In the, um, in the dinner meeting, did, Mr. Brown, did you tell us that we were going to hold it back a month? Did I hear that?
That, that was Area Twenty-five that was on the consent agenda?
I'm sorry. I got confused. I'm good.
All right. So, uh, council, any other discussion on the motion on the Banks-McLaughlin-Davis motion to continue? All right. I'll look to you for your votes. And this is to-
Green.
Leave the public hearing open for continuance. All right, madam clerk, that is unanimous. Mr. Brown, we'll see you-
Okay, thank you.
-in a bit. All right. Out of nine-point-zero-one, uh, presentation of appointments committee recommendations, um, go to Madam Protem, the chair, um, or is there a member of staff?
Oh, I've got it. Thank you.
I've got it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So... All right, Mr. Mayor, I am going to, I will read the people that we have, um, put up for nominations for everybody for the appointments committee. So, um, for the people that I am saying their name, please forgive me if I say your name wrong. It is not intentional. For the airport commission, we have Victor Carnavale, Dan-
Carnavelli.
Carnavelli. Okay, I'm not doing well. Um, Daniel Travizo-
Travieso.
So, I think I'm going to let Councilmember Dawkins take this over. Thank you very much. So, um, Councilmember Dawkins, would you like to continue?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Protem. Keith Jensen. Uh, for the audit committee, Warren O'Brien and Amy Samperton. And for the Fair Housing Commission, Sable Fontanet, Derek King. And we're going to re-advertise another appointment. On the Fayetteville Advisory Committee on Transit, Shaquilla Stroud, Ramona Griffin, Michael Worrell. And then we do have one appointment for an ADA, um, representative that's going to be re-advertised. On the Fayetteville-Cumberland Human Relations Commission, we have James Peterson. We're going to advertise another appointment. And this is the one that I wasn't sure about. This next one for the Cumberland Parks and Rec Advisory Commission, Erica-
Do your best.
Oh, no, Johnny. You jumped. Don't get it, Johnny.
Is it Lewis Strand?
That's good enough, sir.
Um, my, uh, esteemed classmate, uh, Councilman DJ Hare, would you take over from here?
No, sir. You continue.
For the Fayetteville Plant and Commission, Lori Linder and Thomas Eckert. For the Fayetteville Redevelopment Commission, Joseph Johnson. And then another appointment is going to be re-advertised. On the Historic Resources Commission, Liz Barnado Rayner, Elaine Kennybeck, and, um, Carol McDonald. And once again, two appointments are going to be re-advertised. One for building designer, land use design professional, and then one for a general slot. And thank you, Mayor Protem Jensen, for allowing me.
There's another page.
There's another page?
Yes.
I, I, mine won't go for-
Get them all in, Mr. Terry Sanford.
Okay. We went to high school together for a little while, uh, Councilman Hare and I. Joint Fayetteville-Cumberland Senior Citizens Advisory Commission, no appointments are, uh, currently been recommended. Linear Park, uh, Mr. Robert Barefoot, a former city Parks and Rec employee, and Molly Arnold, one of our downtown property owners. Um, on the Millennial Commission, Trevani McNeil.
Trayvon.
Trayvon. Uh, he ran for office. He's a fine young man.
Yes, he is. Yes, sir.
Personnel Review Board, no appointments have been currently recommended. On the Public Arts Commission, Skylar Swan, uh, Vilas Tanape. And then, isn't that correct?
Yes, sir. Yes, I'm just messing with you. Yes, sir.
Yeah. And, uh, we're going to re-advertise the city appointment. Thank you, Mr. Uh, Mrs. Mayor Protem Jensen and Mr. Mayor Colby.
Thank you, Councilmember Dawkins. Um, before I make the motion to, um, accept these people, um, I would like to thank my committee, which is Councilmember Waddell and Councilwoman Kinston. And that was her, your first meeting. And she did a great job. And, um, it is a very hard task to do the boards and commissions meetings. And, um, we want to thank everybody that applied and we went through them thoroughly. And I want to let you know that we appreciate everything that you have done to try to serve our community. And we appreciate the time you're giving us. So, with that being said, I would like to make a motion for us to accept the recommendations for the, um, appointments for the Fayetteville Boards and Commissions.
So, there's a motion by Mayor Protem. There's a second by Councilmember Waddell. Uh, any discussion on the motion? I did have just one point. Terry Sanford did a fine job at teaching how to read over there. Councilmember Dawkins?
Oh, you didn't go there.
All right, council, I'll look to you for your vote.
Green.
All right. Motion carries. All right, council, um, before we look for a motion to adjourn, um, to our, our audience, we will get specific instructions out to you, recommendations as to how you can continue to be a part of these meetings. They will be open and transparent. We will provide clear, precise instructions for you to sign up, uh, to speak, uh, for the next public hearing, public forum. Uh, this is just a new time in this community, so we're having to make adjustments. We appreciate your patience. We'll continue to encourage you, uh, to go online, uh, to take care of your city functions online. You're able to do buil, building permits and many of the other things that you come to City Hall on a daily basis to do online. And we encourage you to, uh, to just until we get our arms around to this community curves, um, the chances of this pandemic spreading, uh, to join us by way of social media or, uh, by Fayetteville TV. So, council, with that, I'll look to you for, oh, briefly.
Briefly, yes, very briefly. But I just want to thank city staff and our, our law enforcement and service providers for really getting a handle on what we could of this. We really, we don't have, you know, directly public health under us. And we don't necessarily have, um, all these other things under us that directly impact citizens. And so, I just wanted to say from council, thank you all so much for doing, you know, what you can with what we have in our own control. Um, it really means a lot to me, I know.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Ingram. All right. Uh, council, look to you for motion to adjourn?